We're gonna go ahead and start our tentative budget hearing for 2018, 2019. I'd have asked Eric Musgrove to open us with implication and pledge.
Our Father in Heaven, we come to you today to thank you for all the wonderful blessings of your life that you have richly bestowed upon us. We've had this time that we have to come together as a people, as the citizens of this great county, this great state, this great nation, to make decisions which will hopefully bring honor and glory to your name and to help those within the counties. Give the commissioners as they make those choices. Pledge to also be with those, the first responders, those in our military, those others who might be serving in harm's way wherever they may be. Pledge you'll watch over them, bring them safely home to their families. Give everyone that is here tonight, pledge you'll return us safely home. Give those who are again who are less fortunate, those who are needed, helps. Your sins end.
Right.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First off, opening up the agenda is number one, Mr. Barry Baker.
Mr. Chairman, this is the tentative budget hearing for the 2018, 2019 fiscal year. You have a tentative millage rate of 9.0000 mills and a proposed tentative budget of $84,737,635. You have a rollback rate of 8.3298 mills and the proposed millage rate is an 8.05 increase from the rollback rate.
All right. At this time, we'll open public hearings. Are any constitutional officers that wish to speak at this time? Hearing none. Were there any outside agencies that wish to speak? Hearing none. Any county department heads? All right. Going on, hearing none. Anyone from the public wishing to speak or public comment? I'd already been warned that you were coming. Hearing none. It's time we'll close public comment. This time we'll recess out of the tentative budget hearing and go into the solid waste collection and disposal benefit board. Mr. Harris?
As Chairman, the proposed assessment rate per household is $130, which represents no increase from the current year.
All right. At this time, we'll open the floor to public comment on the solid waste collection and disposal. Anyone wishing to speak, make way to their podium. Hearing none. At this time, we'll close public comment. They'll have a motion to approve the rate of $130. Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Say it.
We've got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Sessions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. At this time, we'll close the hearing on solid waste. And we'll open the public hearing on the Swanee County Municipal Services Benefit Unit on Fire Protective Board. Mr. Harris?
As Chairman, Commissioners, the per parcel residential rate assessment would be $100 and the non-residential is proposed at 12 cents a square foot up to 179,400 square feet. The vacant land, less than 160 acres, is proposed at $17.91. Vacant land greater than 160 acres up to a maximum of 640 acres is proposed at 14 cents per acre.
All right. At this time, we'll open the floor to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on the Fire Services Municipal Benefit Unit? Hearing none. At this time, we'll close public comment. They'll have a motion to approve.
Say it.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. At this time, we'll close that hearing. And we'll go back into the tentative budget hearing and vote on the Fire Board recommendation and the Solid Waste Board recommendation. Can we vote on them together or do I need to vote on them separately?
Separately.
Separate. All right. On the first item, they'll have a motion to approve the recommendation from the Fire Board.
Say it.
Got a motion to approve Fire Board recommendation by Commissioner Richardson. Do I have a second?
Say it.
I got a second by Commissioner Hill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Moving on to number two, Solid Waste Board recommendation. They'll have a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fleming. Can I count that as a second? Mr. Sessions?
Yep.
Got a second by Commissioner Sessions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. We'll recess out of the tentative budget hearing and go into the MSBU unit for public hearing. Mr. Harris?
We've done a lot of recessing for less than five minutes.
I can tell you what. I'm just reading the way it's written.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we're here to consider adoption of a resolution confirming the assessment role for the MSBU or Municipal Services Benefit Unit known as the 78th Street 76th Terrace Municipal Services Benefit Unit for the year 2019.
Is this the last year on this one or do you know?
I believe it's the last year.
All right. At this time, we'll open the floor for public hearing. Our public comment. Anyone wishing to speak that comes to the podium? Seeing none. At this time, we'll close public comment. They'll have a motion to approve MSBU for 78th Street and 76th Terrace.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Commissioner Sessions. I got a second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. We'll go back into the tentative budget hearing and vote on the MSBU recommendations. They'll have a motion to approve the MSBU recommendation. Any motion? Got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. At this time, Mr. Harris, does the, do you have any changes that need to be made to the tentative budget or anything that we need to discuss?
As Chairman, Commissioners, I'd like to offer some proposed changes for your consideration. You may recall, two years ago, we put a sign truck in the budget. It didn't get funded. This year, we didn't put it in. We were being ever optimistic that it would last. I'm not sure it's gonna last till October 1st, to be honest with you. So I'm gonna ask that you add $35,000 into the budget. I've got a couple of items here, probably three, that would affect your contingency. This is in Department 4110, the Road Department. $35,000 consideration for a signed truck.
Say 4110?
Department.
We talked about, did we budget that last year or the year before?
I think it was last year and we took it out.
Okay. I couldn't remember if we rolled it over or if we took it out.
It was on the wishlist and it got removed. We needed it then, but we've stretched it. We've tried to kind of oil add it till we can. We've bought a bicycle and we're dragging it around the county and it's just not efficient. And it's really, honestly, the shop says it might not make it another two or three weeks.
What is it? What kind of truck is it? You said sign truck?
It's the one that we use for replacing all of these signs and signposts that get run over all over the county.
Yeah, it's more to carry their different signs.
Yeah. That truck's on the road all day, every day, run around all over the county and in the middle of the night when it gets a call from the Highway Patrol. But it's really shot.
Any thoughts? Anybody have any heartburn about adding that in?
I don't.
I think we saved last year.
I think you got three to add that into. All right. What's your next one?
The next one is the graders. You know, we lease all of our graders. With the chip seal roads and our routine maintenance, we are now bumping up against our limit in our lease on the hours that we can run those. We're supposed to have 1,500 hours per year. They're two-year leases and we are really, we've been jockeying graders back and forth and trying to do a number of things to maximize the hours on all of them, but we're gonna go over. So I'm just trying to prepare. I know next year, we're gonna be doing more chip seal roads. If we have a storm, we're for sure gonna go over because we're there now. So we've been negotiating with the vendor. I'm gonna ask that you add $50,000 to the Road Department budget and that would be a line for overage on hours of graders. The negotiated hourly rate is actually the same exact rate, hourly rate, that we pay right now. If we were not already leasing those pieces of equipment and we just walked in and said, hey, we wanna rent a grader. Hourly rate, I think, is $40 an hour, something like that. These are at $13 and change, which is, if you divide our other hours in on what we're leasing, that's what it comes to. So it's a very fair rate.
Would it be cheaper for us just to put another grader into circulation than to pay the overage on it? Now, we can lease one for what? $10,000, $11,000 a year?
We could try that.
I mean, I don't have a problem budgeting this. I'm just asking if that...
Yeah. It's hard for me to say, to be honest with you. I mean, we could try it and see what happens. Let me just say this. If in the current year, if I were, if, because we don't, we didn't have a storm or we haven't had a storm yet, and hopefully we won't, again, I'm being the optimist here. This number represents about a, it's actually $60,000 if we were to take all of those graders and add another 500 hours to them, the ones that we're dealing with right now. But I don't think that we're going to run them all up to 500 hours. If I can turn them in next month, I might be close to really just barely over my hours. In this negotiated rate, we are only paying for the hours that we use, but we have to buy them in 125-hour increments. We don't have to buy the 500-hour increments, okay? And I'm thinking, right now, that'll take care of us. So if we had budgeted for this, it would be less, considerably less than the $50,000.
So how many graders we running right now on lease?
14.
14.
So that means we can, with doing that, you can add 330 hours per grader if they're all bumped up pretty close. So that, at that rate, it's a give and take. And Ricky, we're probably so close on the hours that if we put another grader in there, we'd have to just use that grader all the time and be able to be all over the place with them.
No, I was just thinking, I was talking about going forward if we're gonna stay on chip seal projects, that it may just be prudent to add one that's just specifically designated to the project.
For that.
I wasn't going with it.
In a normal year, I'm thinking I will have some graders because the way we're trying to shift them around, I'm gonna have some graders that really are gonna come in at their 3,000. I'm gonna have some that are gonna go a little bit over, but my hope would be in normal years that they're still within the first 125. So it might be cheaper doing it this way ultimately. Now, if we have a storm where everyone's wide open everywhere, you know, still I think the 50 would cover it.
Like you said, you're effectively buying 330 hours for every grader if you do this. So that'll probably get you through with no real issues.
I think it will.
Any more discussion on it?
So that would be two graders concerning with...
No, this would be, this is just an overage for hours on whatever number of graders come in over, over the 3,000, what it amounts to. But we work hard to keep those things within the 3,000. We just know from what we've been experiencing, taking care of our routine maintenance and building chip seal roads, that we're, we're running those graders a lot. We're getting up to our 3,000.
The more, the less hours. The more graders, the less hours.
Just to do that job. But what did y'all say the lease was? I thought it was $12,000 a year or something.
11, 12.
Is that what it is, 10 to 12?
Started out, first ones we did were like 7,500 and then it went up to 10, but I can't remember what it is now. 10 or 11, 12, somewhere in there.
Yeah.
I mean, could we, what the chairman was suggesting, is that a doable project to use one or even two graders just for those chip seal projects, which seem to be eating up quite a bit of our time?
Well, the other side of this is I've only got so many grader operators.
Well, that was my next question and do we have operators?
If we do it this way, we're only paying, we're actually utilizing and no more than that. So I wouldn't have any graders parked waiting for an operator in this case. And I really, we're very close to our limit right now. I just know that if we had a storm, I know it's putting us over. And I just need a provision for that in the budget. If it doesn't happen next year, if we spend $5,000 next year, that's great.
Sure.
But if we have a storm and I need $45,000, then we've got it.
Well, I'm good with that if, you know, you don't know how things are gonna turn out, whether the storm come this way and if you got it, if you need it, you got it. The biggest problem is we ain't, we needed it, we ain't got it, you know?
Well, if we need it, we're gonna have to pay for it. We're just gonna have to do it. I would just rather write a budget, something for it, than always try to tap into contingency later.
That's one. Where y'all at on it?
I'm curious on this. This is kind of a side question, but I think it's related for me and my decision would be, considering that we're running that many hours on our graders and we're very close, how are we on overtime with these? Because if we're considering paying a lot of overtime, it may be worth, in the future, an extra grader and an extra operator as well.
Well, we've increased our overtime budget. This is part of a business decision that we have to make. I mean, I've got certain numbers of people that I can put on these chip seal roads and still maintain routine maintenance. And I don't wanna crowd those projects. I can't split up and have, try to create another team because then it takes more of our dump trucks away too and we run into a dump truck problem. I'm trying to incorporate this chip seal business into...
And I think everybody understood that when we approved them, that we weren't gonna take away from routine maintenance on the roads to do the chip seals, that it was gonna be done on extra days. I mean, but it begs the question, if we're running high on our hours, then we're running higher on our hours.
Yeah, we're running, we're running higher on our overtime.
But at some point in time, if we're fortunate enough to continue chip seal projects and these roads get accomplished, then those graders won't be grading those roads either.
That's correct.
That's true.
Long-term plan is we reduce the number of miles that we're grading on a regular basis.
Makes sense.
You gotta bite the bullet for a little while.
That's right.
Gradually it'll save.
And we've been easing into this thing, you know? We started out pretty conservatively last year and when we tried, you know, we added some dump trucks and I think we added, I'm trying to remember, we added one grader, I believe. But we're still bumping these hours and this is a very conservative approach. Like I said, we're only gonna pay this if we need it. If we don't need it, then all the better.
Yeah.
I know the two that we're doing on, well, off of 129, they're just, just south of town's gonna save us quite a bit of time.
116.
Overtime, not overtime, but just in man-hours going back, because that's probably one of my highest callback roads as far as maintenance in District 3 because of the way the roads laid out over the hills and the way it washes out, pulls all the lime rock and the dirt down into people's yards. Every time it rains, we got a grader down there scraping the front yards, getting it back onto the road. So I mean, overtime, that's gonna save us on the, on the routine maintenance and the having to go back maintenance. Because that's hurt, that hurts you when you gotta pull a grader off that road, three miles down the road because it rain and run it all the way back there to fix one of your high-maintenance problems.
Especially because they always grade right before it rains.
We only do that in your district.
That's a lie.
My grandbaby told me four years ago, she says, there's a grader, it's gonna rain tomorrow.
Yeah.
Four-year-old knew that.
We have people call all the time saying, must've known it was gonna rain, y'all were out here grading. We've had them call and say, stop the grader, it's supposed to rain tomorrow.
I don't have a problem with it, considering the fact that we're, we are investing in a short-term situation that's gonna reduce over our hours in the future.
So that gets you your two. Y'all agree with it? Okay, you got your three. One, two, three. All right. Next one?
Next one, I've got two different positions in Public Works that have becoming, have become revolving doors. We just can't keep people because we're competing with the private sector. One is our commercial truck driver, one, which is a dump truck driver. Out of eight drivers, I think, seven drivers, all but one has been there for a year or less. We've hired some recently that we keep for a week, some for three days, some for two weeks, and then they find a job making more money. I'm asking that you increase that salary line by $1. Actually, let me just give you the number. It's a $16,000 impact. It's essentially a dollar to those drivers. I think it's a dollar for five and 50 cents for two of them to address a compression issue that would be created by the dollar.
Are we gonna fund that out of contingency or can we absorb that in the gas tax money that Public Works' current budget?
I think we've got everything budgeted out. I don't remember what our... Hang on a second, let me look and see. We're not showing a contingency in there for this year in that budget.
Are or are not?
We are not. So we would have to come out of contention, your contingency.
Is that 410 as well?
4110. It's TAB 38. It's, let's see, it's, it's gonna put us closer to solving the problem because that's, I mean, when they're leaving, they're telling us exactly why they're leaving. They're leaving because of money.
So the $17,873 is gonna be drained out on the contingency on 4110?
Right.
Absorbing the rest of the budget.
I have a question. How much money do you spend when you bring each driver on? Because you're, you know, with this turnover, you're spending lots of money just getting them going. So have you come up with a cost?
We've got the background checks and the physical and drug screening and lots of other things. We sign them up for insurance and keep them for a month or something or less and then they're gone. There's quite a bit of administrative work involved in it. Worst part of this, though, is we, we're on the hook for these leased pieces of equipment. We want drivers that we can keep that are gonna take ownership of these trucks and, you know, take care of them. And we're just in a unique situation where we've had incredible turnover in this, this particular position.
What's the average stay on them?
Pardon me?
What's the average, the average employee, how long do they stay?
Well, these guys, I think, majority of these have been there for less than a year.
You said that, I was just wondering.
I mean, recently, I know that we've had some that stayed a week or less, others that stayed two or three weeks. That isn't good when you're running leased equipment.
What are they paid right now? One?
Starting rate is $10.50 an hour.
Which is low for some...
Two things I'd like for you to consider doing. One is to add a dollar to what's already budgeted. What's in your budget, as you know for all the employees, was 50 cents and 1 percent. I'd ask that you consider adding the dollar and then waive that one-year requirement that we have with all the other employees. We did this with fire last year. Just go ahead and implement this raise in that particular position.
Well, I was gonna suggest that already on this one. I was just, well, I was just looking for somewhere to take it out of besides contingency. I don't have a problem doing it. I wanted to do it. I was just hoping we could find a place in, within the current budget to do it instead of taking that one from contingency. On your in-house repairs, equipment repairs, could we take it from that line or are you pushing that number every year?
I don't have my green bar with me, so I can't answer that question for you right now.
Okay. I just, I don't know how...
I will say this. We don't, we've never exhausted our budget. I mean, the reality is that a number of these things that are in this budget either will or will not occur before this time next year. There will be $16,000 in there somewhere.
I don't care where you take it from. If you could just a thousand here, a thousand there, if y'all could figure that out, that's where I'd go.
What if we do this? What if we do this? Is it possible, since you figured you're gonna add it back in, we can come back and add it back in to escrow on that lot pressure since we were gonna escrow that $200,000, we reduce it by that amount? And if we have to, if you don't use it, just push it back over instead of contingency, go into the escrow.
Well, on the salary line, I will use it. You'll have money left over at the end of the year that we could put back into the escrow.
That's what I'm saying. If we, I wouldn't have a problem, Mr. Chairman, if we, if we took it from one place, if we had it, whatever's extra in contingency next year, just push it over to the, back to the lot pressure.
Oh, I don't care where he pulls it from out of there. I'll leave that up to him. He knows his budget on what he needs and where he needs it better than we do. I just would prefer to come out of that. If you think you can make that happen.
I can make it happen. I just need the board to authorize it and I'll figure out where to get it.
I'm good with it. Anybody else? I'm good.
I don't have a problem with it.
To do it, to do it within the Public Work, his budget?
Within the current budget.
Yes.
Or the disposed budget. So do we have three for that?
Yes, sir. We need to, we'll need to decide the other part about waiving that at a board meeting, won't we? Do we have to take action on that?
If you give us direction, we can make it happen. That's not a problem.
Yeah, I'm fine with waiving it.
As long as Eric records it in, in the minutes, we're good.
Okay. Are y'all fine with that?
Explain it a little bit.
We've got several of them that are gonna miss the 50 cent an hour raise by about 15 days, 30 days.
Waive that.
And just waiving it.
Yeah, and these two positions that we're, we've got this big problem and we need to go ahead and try to correct it. That might, that will help. Go ahead and implement what was already in the budget of the 1% increase and the 50 cents. So we're adding to that with this, but we're also not requiring them to wait a year like we do everyone else.
We've, we've had a hard time filling those positions as well. I mean, it's a CDL license to come in and fill it for, for $10 an hour. People always coming in asking for the job, but when they hear the pay, they...
They don't take the job.
They'll with Anderson, Columbia and their employees and they pay them $10.
And anytime when you have them...
In and out.
Well, but not just that, when you have a robust economy and construction going on everywhere, everybody's competing for the same CDL truck drivers and they can make more right now, paving 75, 910 and everything else that they got going on.
Are y'all talking, are you gonna go back and revisit the other guys that are 15 and 30 days short? Can't you do that all at one meeting, at the next meeting? I mean, we're just budgeting right now.
Well, that's what I was asking. It needs to be done at the meeting, doesn't it?
Yeah. I mean, if you're gonna waive the other part.
Right. That's the part I was asking. I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but...
This specific truck driver.
Yeah, because it's currently in policy and to waive it, it's gonna have to be in the form of a motion to have it waived.
Have it waived.
I think we're all agreeing on it. We'll just talk about it at the next agenda.
All right. We can do that. The next thing was during the workshop when we were talking about the... The next thing was, during the workshop, when we were talking about the equipment, we talked about adding the inmate vans into that dollar figure that we had for equipment. And we didn't change the number, we just said we included those in case they're available when we're out shopping for those things in Sarasota or someplace. It didn't show up later with the revision in the book, I just wanna make sure, because we agreed upon that in the budget workshop, that in the road department budget, we included the inmate vans. We already had some listed in the solid waste budget as well.
What was the dollar amount that we were adding to that? Do you remember?
Well, we didn't change the dollar, the total dollar amount for the...
We just said we would, we included the vans.
We just included the words inmate vans, if we can find those when we're shopping. Because when we go down there, Sarasota County and some of these other surplus sales...
We were adding that into the truck line, wasn't it?
There were trucks, there were some trucks in there, used pickup trucks and some other things. So we created a new number, we just added the words inmate vans on there.
I remember that discussion.
In case those are available.
It's not in there, it's not listed.
Right, I just want it listed in there.
Do you know the change that he's referring to, Nina?
Whatever that number was. Right, and it should've just been added to the list with no dollar in it.
Is that supposed to be updated somewhere on this? Because I've got the bulldozer still in mine.
It's probably deleted on the actual list. Now, there is one other bulldozer, there's a different bulldozer that we do have that's leased, but the new one did not get included. We took that out.
Now, are you talking about, Nina, the, I'm looking, I'm talking about under TAB 38, the one that says internal notes, page 9 of 9. That's the one that, to me, what I see is that under equipment validation scratch, says... Hydraulic lift. Okay, so that's where I'm, I don't have it updated. All right, so that's what I don't have updated, I have used pickups.
In the end, it may be five used pickup trucks, but if there's only two pickup trucks, and we can get... Correct, we didn't change the total, the 150 is probably incorrect. That sounds right, because we had the dozer on there and it was 20.
Yeah, it's still on mine, so is the asphalt heating machine, 2,000.
I think the list that you're looking at is different than what she does.
Apparently, that's what I'm saying.
Which means I gotta flip over and look at this gigantic book. I think now we're on the same, getting close to the same page.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other item, and it has nothing to do with the general fund or the contingency.
Yes, sir.
This would be in the solid waste budget, 3410 collections. This is the other position that we're having a problem with keeping people in. A proposal to add an additional 75 cents an hour to those positions, it's cost us $33,000, the money's in that budget. I'm just asking the board to consider approaching that the same way that we did with dump truck drivers.
And this will come out of the current, the budget that's already been established?
Solid waste budget.
It's not, it's not, it's not...
It's a salary adjustment, but the money is in that...
Salary adjustment, but the money's in that budget, in the current budget.
That's right.
I'm fine with that.
And these are, again, we, I'd be approaching this the same way with waiving that one-year requirement.
You can bring both of those back at the next board meeting.
Right.
I'm fine with you just go ahead and put that on consent, I think board's pretty much on board with it.
And that's all I have.
Everyone okay with that? I'm sorry, I don't know if you said yes or no.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you got okay with that, Nina? All right. Anything else, any of the board members?
Chairman, I'm just curious about one thing, I just wanted to ask Mr. Hale, Mr. Hale down here, if he had found out any inform, any more information about the road signs since the workshops?
Well, here's what I have found out, a lot of the people are willing to pay for it themselves, the families are, if we can figure out if it needs, how we wanna do that. Me and Mr. Harris has not discussed that, I have it...
So from a funding standpoint, let's just hold off on it until we decide what legal...
I think a lot of them are willing to pay for it themselves, so, yeah. And again, it would be, do we put it below it, on that same sign, another sign next to it?
I would think posts.
We can, I don't mean to be cutting either one of y'all, but we'll discuss that at a different time, since it's not affecting the budget. Yes, sir?
It's all right, Mr. Chairman, I was also gonna say, at the, at Tuesday night's meeting is where y'all also made an adjustment for Mr. Powell's salary.
That's right, we talked about it.
That's where, where that'll also be included in there, and that'd be a, it'll, it'll reduce the...
That was a $13,000 adjustment, 14,000?
14,000. That's how, it'll, it'll reduce your...
And that will come out of contingency, right? Do you have a total on, on what that will?
Yeah, where we at?
Where we're at, Nina?
834, 44. 34.
Well, I'd like to make a recommendation, if I could, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to take a good portion of this money and try to put it away and get it out of contingency, to where, since this last year, we pretty well spent everything we had in contingency, I'd like to make it a little bit harder to get a hold of. And since it's dropped a little lower than I thought it was gonna drop, I'd like to make a recommendation to take about $400,000 and put it somewhere a little safer in contingency, and leave the balance in contingency for now.
Okay, I'd actually thought on the same lines, I know we pulled quite a bit out of the, was it capital reserve outlay? And since we had a contingency, and since we used some of that reserve line, I thought about maybe putting some back into that line.
That's fine with me. I really thought we'd end up a little higher, I was gonna recommend a half a million, but it's close.
Hey, we've, we've, we've rode out 12 months on less than $200,000.
I know we have. But I think, to be fair to both, you know, both ways, if we took a $400,000 chunk and put it back in that fund, it's fine, makes it a little harder to get a hold of.
I'm fine with moving it.
I would be fine too, considering all the capital projects we got on the list.
We've got, we've already got a lot of stuff budgeted, we got escrow budgeted, we've got a lot of stuff going on that we'll pay for things, so I think we can put this back.
I'm fine with putting 500. It's, it's not as if an emergency does arise, a storm or anything that we can't handle.
We can still get our hands on it, we have to. Let's just go 5, if everybody's good with it.
I'm fine with it. Sort of, okay, I guess, I guess, okay, okay. I mean, we, we, we wrote it out less than, with less than that, using less than, than that this past year, right? As far as that a contingency?
No, we...
We burned a lot of it.
Burned it up.
That's right.
Yeah, we spent it. We got into mine and Nina's shoebox funds.
Yeah.
We did some significant things, though, if you think about it, though. You think about the 30 acres on Gold Kiss that we purchased and other things that we're looking towards the future.
I believe we used money for the, I probably may be, may be wrong, but the water treatment tower, was that out of contingency?
Bought that land.
Three different ones.
Three different, yeah.
Right.
So I mean, it was all moving, it was all moving the county and the Drexel, we wanted to go with economic development, with our sewer, water, and our different treatments, so it wasn't, it wasn't misspent. But I, I don't foresee those big expenses coming up this year. The ones that we do have, I think we did a pretty good job budgeting for them.
Definitely wasn't for commissioner pay raises or anything like that.
Everybody good with 500?
Yeah.
Back end, that was capital reserve that we pulled, what, about 600,000 out per equipment this year?
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. I just don't know where I wrote it.
It was, I think so, it was about, I know it was around 600, 600.
Reserve for capital improvement.
We're gonna go 500.
Yeah. All right, anything else? If nothing else, then it's time to vote on the tentative millage rate. We have a tentative real, millage rate of nine mills. Have a motion to approve the tentative millage rate?
Make a motion to approve. Go lower if we have to.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Now we need a motion to approve the tentative budget, and even though we made some changes, the actual budget number didn't change correctly, Nina, still 84,737, 84,734,635.
37.
37, I'm not used to saying numbers that big. Or at least spinning it. I have a motion to approve the tentative budget.
Is everybody in motion?
Second.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Lemmings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Being of other business, at this time, we'll close the tentative budget hearing. Thank you all.